Can you hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. We're actually going to be starting. Like to welcome everyone. Thank you for attending. Thank you for submitting testimony. I'm pretty much going to keep it very short so we can keep this moving succinctly. And do you have remarks, sir?
No, just to know what we're doing today. This is our semi-annual public hearing. The statute that created the advisory committee and the Office of the Ombuds requires twice a year, we have a public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is for the Ombuds to present the his or her, his in this case, findings, recommendations and activities from the past six months. In this instance, because we got started a little bit late with having Mr. Attorney Ward as an interim and then in the full position. We're going back about nine months or eight months, so a little bit more than the six. And then we'll have another hearing in December where we check in and kind of look back on the activities of the office for the next six months. So the primary speakers tonight are going to be Attorney Ward, our Ombuds and you, any members of the public who wish to testify. And again, like Ms. Garcia, I thank you all for being here. Those of you who are here in person, those attending by Zoom and those who have submitted testimony, this is an opportunity for both the Ombuds and our committee to hear from you and for you to hear from the Ombuds about the activities of the office, which of course is in its nascent stages. So with that, I'll ask Attorney Ward to present his summary, the semi-annual summary. This is also, this will be an oral summary, obviously, but there is a written report on the Ombuds website and I believe the advisory committee website as well. So you can look at that. And while we'll be hearing public testimony, it's also, I just will remind you, at any time, you can contact the advisory committee, go to the website and submit any comments and we'll take those into account as well. And of course, the same goes for the Ombuds. But Attorney Ward, if you'd like to. Yeah, there's a question period after we'll hear from. Yep, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you Chairman Dooley for that, those opening remarks. So as you mentioned, this semi-annual report covers the period from September 30 of 2024 to May 19 of 2025. It's important to note, I began my appointment, my interim appointment on September 23rd of 2024. So this report runs from about a week after that date. So since the 30th and up until May 19th of this year, the office has formally processed 196 complaints submitted by incarcerated individuals. We have a backlog of approximately 100 and at the time of writing this, there was 189 additional complaints received by mail that remain unreviewed due to staffing limitations. During this period, we engaged in significant interagency engagement and legislative advocacy, over 30 stakeholder meetings with partners, including the Department of Correction, Office of Policy and Management, Disabilities Rights CT and the DMV, to name a few. We also conducted outreach to institutions, University of Connecticut, Wesleyan and Eastern Connecticut State University, and we also participated in a convening of other Ombuds offices throughout the country. During this period, we also did site visits to 13 correctional institutions across the state. The report also summarizes some key legislative developments, which I will discuss at length later. But we also marked some significant challenges with the office. First and foremost, the limited staffing capacity, myself being the only staffer during this period. Limited access to the budget, which I'll explain a little bit more in detail as well. Delays in record access to, due to conflicting interpretations of HIPAA. A lack of a central case management system, and those were all barriers that were or are directly impacting our ability to meet our legislative mandate. And so, moving on to the second page, discussing particularly the activities and services. The 189 complaints that primarily have been received by mail have yet to be reviewed or addressed due to capacity constraints. The amount of volume, it underscores the pressing need for increased staffing and systematic support in the office. And so, I think one of the things of note to notice is that, you know, the majority of the complaints that have been addressed were complaints that came in via mail, excuse me, via email electronically. So those were ones, you know, I was able to triage very quickly. And when I say formally addressed, meaning, you know, at least take down the info of the person who wrote it, what facility they were in, and then get out some type of at least initial response to them. The 189 or so that have not yet been addressed are all regular US postal mail. And they haven't been addressed just because of the competing responsibilities to the office, the time that it would take to open up the mail, put the information in the Excel sheet that I use and then kick out a paper response or set up a phone call with an individual we haven't been able to get to. Moving on to interagency and stakeholder engagement, between September of 2024 and May of 2025, we undertook a broad range of inter collaborative, interagency collaboration. We met with individuals on hunger strike at McDougal Walker. We had several discussions with folks at the Office of Policy and Management. Obviously, leadership staff in all sorts of facets of the Department of Correction, including Health Services, Security Division, Food Services and reentry. We also met several times with the Governor's Office, met with our counterparts over at the Office of Child Advocate, as well as consultations with the DOC Legislative Director, excuse me, Legal Director and Legislative Staff here in the buildings, particularly members of the Judiciary Committee and the Appropriations Committee. The office has also participated in a couple of working groups. The one who worked for safety, correctional health services, body worn cameras. And we've also collaborated a little bit with Disabilities Rights, the Yale Medical Legal Partnership and the ID Card Coalition. We provided testimony on several pieces of legislation. Again, I'll get into that more depth later in the presentation. We also did a site visit to New Jersey, to the New Jersey Correction Ombuds Office, and we also attended a convening of Ombuds throughout the country at the University of Texas. During that same period, as I mentioned, we visited every correctional institution in the state, meeting directly with wardens and staff. And in some instances, we were there to tour the facility and meet with staff. But in other instances, we were there to directly address issues, things such as mail delays, medical access and facility conditions. We also did meet with several academic partners, most notably UConn School of Public Policy and UConn School of Law. We also spoke to students at Eastern Connecticut State University and at Wesleyan as well. And we also spoke to some of the training team over at the Maloney Training School, which trains all of our correction officials. And we also spoke to the new, I think, one of the new correction officer classes, which I believe is upwards of 100 folks. And so, you know, during that period, we tried to make some strides towards transparency and accessibility. And towards that effort, we've launched our official website, which is now up and running. And this report is obviously available on. I did discuss the academic engagement and I think I've already discussed some of the collaboration that we've done nationally. You'll also see in the report kind of complaints by facilities. So far, McDougal Walker is the facility that is certainly providing the most number of complaints at this time. I can't assess whether or not it is due to a, due to any necessarily particular conditions at that facility. But, you know, I do recognize that, you know, that facility is the facility that I had my initial contact with as Ombuds when I worked on the brief hunger strike that they had there. And so that's a facility that is just aware of the office, I think, in a more tangible way than some other facilities. And I think that should be underscored as well in that, you know, these 400 or so complaints that we've gotten during this period were all without, you know, any really significant outreach to the incarcerated population. It was, a lot of this was through word of mouth, through advocates and through just news media, discussing the office, getting up and running and the appointment of an interim. Among, among the complaints, you know, medical continues to be a high category in terms of the complaints. Safety and violence is another one. Property claims and then other uncategorized is certainly a high number. And within that, sometimes complaints come in and it's, they're multifaceted. They have a number of different issues or sometimes you can't really tell what the issue is. Or they're just general kind of complaints. And so, you know, that category does need to be, I think, specified a little bit more in a case management system will certainly help with that. I want to talk a little bit about some of the ongoing challenges that we faced during these past six months. So since we've been operational, which is since September of 2024, I remain the sole employee of the office. We did post a position for an office assistant that posting closed in April of this year. We received over 200 applications and that pool has been narrowed to 41 candidates. And now we may enter into an interview stage. My concern, I think, with the position that was posted is the wage was particularly low. So if you, I think the range was between $40,000 and $60,000. If you are, if you are somebody who is new to state service, you'd be paid at the lower end of the pay wage. And so, you know, $40,000 for someone working for state government after taxes is, I don't think is necessarily a livable wage. And so, through the budget that's set to take place or set to go in an enactment in the next fiscal year, we'll be able to move this position up to an office admin, which has a larger salary range and hopefully get a new batch of candidates. So that development came, I would say sometime later in May, early, excuse me, later in April, early in May. But this particular job posting for this office assistant, it did go out. And then it was, it actually had to be rescinded because on May 10th, the governor instituted a statewide hiring freeze while we were in the middle of getting this job posted. And so I think we put in for this office assistant sometime in the early part of 2024. And right before, once it got cleared, this hiring freeze went into effect in March and held it up. And so we had to resubmit and then it didn't get posted until probably April. And then the job posting closed in April, on April 22nd. But I think I should at least talk about kind of the hiring process and why it's a bit more complex than the private sector. The applications have to be collected by, not by myself, but by the Department of Administrative Services. They're then reviewed for minimum qualifications and then to determine whether or not any bargaining units have priority unit, excuse me, priority position or priority rights for the position, rather. And that does take some time because they have, the person who is a member of the bargaining unit has a certain amount of time that they can either accept or decline the position. Also, once you start interviewing candidates, you have to have a hiring committee. It has to be the same hiring committee for every interviewee. You have to ask them the same questions. And so that process does take considerable amount of time. And then after you select the candidate, you have to send out, obviously, you know, materials they have to accept. And so that is, you know, a pretty lengthy process. And so, you know, given that, with that in mind, we do not expect to reach full staffing capacity until the second quarter of 2026. And so I think, you know, I'm hoping we can get this new crop of positions that were funded in this last budget posted very early in July and hopefully start interviews. Maybe, maybe in August. And maybe that's being ambitious because I'm going to try to do as many as, many interviews and as many postings as I can at the same time. But, you know, to give ourselves some grace, you can't anticipate the office being fully staffed until likely sometime in the second quarter of next year. And so those delays, they pose a significant barrier to fulfilling our mandate, to responding to the volume of complaints and the complexity of complaints in a timely way. The next issue, you know, significant issue that we faced is, is we had a very different interpretation of our statutory authority and the restrictions that HIPAA imposes on Ombuds offices and folks who are not medical providers in terms of accessing records. And so, you know, to put that bluntly, the DOC's policy, whenever the Office of the Ombuds requested information about an incarcerated person, they were requiring us to get a signed release for each inquiry. So if I, if the office was contacting them regarding someone's housing status or a disciplinary ticket, they were requiring the office to obtain a signed release from the individual before they would talk to us about any pertinent information. And then, you know, that was just on the, on the security and custody information. And then on the medical side, they also were requiring us to have a separate release to access the medical records. Through meeting with my counterparts from around the country, specifically the New Jersey office, they were able to furnish a legal memo developed by the New Jersey Attorney General, which I was able to provide to DOC. Obviously, they're being counseled by our Connecticut State Attorney, our Connecticut Attorney General, as well as the Governor's Office. And roughly two weeks ago, we were able to come to an understanding that, that the statutory authority and Connecticut general statute, as well as the audit and exemption functions in HIPAA allow the office to access those records without having, having obtained a signed release. But, you know, for, for a significant portion of this, this reporting period, actually throughout the entirety of this reporting period from September to May of this year, we were, we had to go meet with an individual or have a, have a counselor, have the individual sign a release, get the release scanned and sent back to us and then sent to Central Records or sent to whoever we were trying to speak to about that particular complaint to be able to have a, have an informed conversation about what was going on in the office. And so that presented a significant hurdle. But I'm happy to say that we resolved it and we are moving forward without that restriction. You know, one thing I did glean from meeting with my counterparts in other states is that a lot of the other states have real time access to some of the electronic databases that are used by correctional staff. And that is a standard that I'm hoping that our office can eventually get to. That by having access to that system, it would allow us, the office, to monitor disciplinary actions, housing placements, grievances, medical alerts, without the delay or need for individual authorizations. We'd be able to seamlessly access all that information in our office. And so we're hoping we can get there at some point. The next significant issue is obviously the complaint backlog. I think I already discussed a bit about, you know, what being able to formally intake these complaints look like, logging, logging the complaint, the associated facility and individual into the tracking spreadsheet and providing some, some form of response. Without staffing and administrative support, though, it's tough for me as one. Without staffing and administrative support, though, it's tough for me as one individual to meet the demands of almost four hundred complaints. And then the last is a lack of a case management system. And so, as I've probably said a couple of times, I've been tracking all this information on an Excel spreadsheet, but we really need some type of case management software, very similar to what, you know, a law firm would use, like a Clio or a Filevine software. And the, really the hurdle that prevented the office from accessing that was due to the budget. And so when the budget was passed for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five biennium, or excuse me, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six biennium, it appropriated four hundred thousand dollars to the Office of the Alms Bud's, but all of that money was placed in what they call a PS line, which is Personnel Services, meaning it only, that money could only be spent on staff. And so we're only allowed to deviate a certain percentage of that amount for operating expenses. So the amount we were able to deviate from that four hundred thousand to what's called the OE line, operating expense line, was only six thousand. So after, you know, the cost of obtaining a computer for me, a vehicle for the office, office supplies, there wasn't much left of that six thousand dollars. And we wanted to have at least a cushion up until we received new funds on July first. And so we weren't able to purchase a case management tracking system or at least a license for it during this last budget cycle. But anticipate being able to access one hopefully by July first or sometime in the month of July. So next is legislative updates, key bills impacting the office. And the summary that is on the report that's on the Alms Bud's page is a bit dated in that, you know, this was written maybe three or four weeks out from legislative session ending. And, but just broadly, you know, the, I personally testified on over a dozen bills impacting the rights and conditions of confinement for individuals. They addressed a broad range of issues, solitary confinement, medical and mental health access, disciplinary procedures, facility transparency and family communication. I will say, one of the huge advocacy successes was the removal of a proposal to eliminate free electronic messaging. That was included in the Governor's Budget Proposal. And so that was not enacted through advocacy that this office and other advocates engaged in. Believe there was also a plan to assess fines for certain disciplines, disciplinary actions. I think that was scrapped from the final budget bill as well. And so, kind of to talk about the legislative stuff more broadly, I think I'll start with the fact concerning the state budget for the biennium ending and on June thirtieth of 2027. And so, folks may recall that in the Governor's original budget proposal, the office again was allocated four hundred thousand dollars through advocacy by this office and other advocates, as well as individuals who are incarcerated. The Appropriations Committee and the Governor agreed to appropriate the office seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and then seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it nearly doubles, both budget years nearly double the original proposal of four hundred thousand. It moves, it create, this particular budget created an individual line item for the Office of the Alms Bud's budget, which wasn't the case in the previous budget. We were actually coupled in with the Office of Government Accountability, which caused all the accounting issues that I just mentioned. So now we have our separate line item. These funds are in a OE line, so we can use them pretty freely. And so that is a significant piece that's in, it's House Bill seven two eight seven, if anybody is tracking. The other significant portion related to this office that's in House Bill seven two eight seven is a clearer and more distinct mandate to evaluate the provision of healthcare services in correctional facilities. And so the office is now authorized and mandated to receive, investigate and respond to complaints related to access or quality of healthcare by DOC. We're allowed to employ or contract with licensed healthcare professionals to conduct reviews of those complaints when necessary. We're allowed to collect and analyze system-wide data, including metrics such as appointment wait times, access to mental health care, medication access and continuity, hospitalizations and mortalities. And then we're charged with making formal recommendations to the Department of Correction, DPH, Department of Public Health, and the General Assembly's Public Health and Judiciary Committees on potential improvements to the healthcare delivery system. And that report is due December first. In the same bill, DOC's also been charged with evaluating their own healthcare. Their report is due to the legislature October of 2025, so October of this year. Folks may recall they were mandated in twenty, I believe, twenty twenty-two to do a report and valuation on their healthcare. And so now the legislature's amended that portion and is requiring them to do one. Again, that will be produced in October of this year. And so our report will come, you know, a couple of months after and we'll obviously all be talking about that in the next legislative session that convenes in February of 2026. And so DOC's requirement in terms of evaluating of their healthcare, that's contained in Section two eighty-two of House Bill seven two eight seven. And it mandates them to maintain a formal plan for providing healthcare to incarcerated individuals. It requires it by October first. And it requires compliance with specific standards, including initial health assessments. So in terms of assessing people as soon as they come into facilities, clinically indicated annual physical exams, which is mandated under state law, adequate mental health staffing, discharge planning, vaccination protocols, dental access, substance use treatment, prenatal and postnatal care for incarcerated women. And there is a new requirement in this bill for mental health, a mental health intake for all individuals. And it's now statutorily mandated that that mental health intake be provided within two business days if those services are identified during the initial health intake screening. The same bill also has a ban on NutriLoaf. I know that was a proposal by Representative Brazario of Bridgeport. That was a standalone bill that made it into this particular, this budget bill. But it prohibits the use of NutriLoaf and also prevents and prohibits other forms of diet-based punishment in correctional facilities. Section two eighty-four of that bill requires DOC to provide all incarcerated individuals with standardized forms to designate a release of contact information and an emergency contact. That's something that, you know, a common issue that comes up in my term is Alms Bud's is that loved ones' contact from the community and they're, they get conflicted things from the facility because they're told either this person doesn't have a release of information or that person is not the emergency contact. And so that piece is a welcome addition to the bill. Section two eighty-eight and two eighty-nine of the bill discuss the strip and cavity search oversight, which was, you know, the work of Stop Solitary and this Barbara Fair, leading the charge on that. And was happy to, this office was happy to provide some support on that as well. But the final, the final language that made it into the bill requires the DOC Commissioner to submit a report to Judiciary and Government Administration Elections Committee evaluating current directives and procedures for stripping cavity searches, comparisons to policies in other northeastern states and federal systems, differences in policies and practices by the type of institution. And that report is due February fifteenth of 2027. I will say, as part of the Alms Bud's statutory mandate under Section two A of the bill, of our authorizing statute, which I believe is eighteen eight eight JJ, we're going to do a comprehensive review of all of DOC's administrative directives. And so our report, likely identifying some of these same things, is going to come out well ahead of this comparative evaluation report that is mandated on stripping cavity searches for DOC. I will say the language of the statute too regarding this issue, it gives them up until February fifteenth of 2027 to put the plan together, but it doesn't mean that they can't issue their findings sooner. And so my findings are going to come out likely in no later than December first of this year. And so, you know, while the statute gives DOC until February of 2027 to come out with these findings, they certainly can act sooner and I certainly will be pushing them to do so. I did want to also talk about the funding, initial funding for the pilot for the body scanners. And from my communication with the Governor's Office, it's my understanding that in the final enacted budget in the DOC line item, there's a, there is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the operating expenses line to provide for the body scanner pilot program. And so they're, we're still in, you know, the early days post-session. Session ended June fourth. And so they're still looking through their current budget and they're also looking at bonding. There is a bonding meeting, I believe, in the next two weeks. And they're trying to work with legislative leaders in the Senate to identify whether or not this needs to go for bonding or whether or not the appropriation that doesn't kick in again until next fiscal year will be sufficient. Suffice it to say, though, I anticipate that the pilot for the body scanners will be implemented sometime during this next fiscal year. Again, well ahead of this twenty twenty-seven February deadline that is initiated in statute. And so, did want to share that. Section two eighty-nine of the bill also requires that annual reporting on these searches. That goes into effect of January of 2027 as well. But it now requires the DOC to submit an annual report to the legislature containing the number of strips and cavity searches conducted, broken down by facility, any lawsuits filed related to such searches, including their status or outcome, and a copy of current DOC policy on these searches, including training requirements for correctional staff. So those are, those are all the notable updates from House Bill seven two eight seven. And next, turning to Senate Bill one five four one, which is the Act Concerning the Office of the Correction Alms Bud's. This is a bill that I drafted, that I significantly lobbied for. And I'm just going to run through the highlight, the key provisions. First and foremost, it extends the term of the Alms Bud's following my initial term. So starting January sixth of 2027, the Alms Bud's will serve for a four-year term aligned with the term of the Governor. And I believe that changing that term provides greater institutional continuity and independence. You know, I think a two-year period is just a really short time for whoever my predecessor is or whoever the predecessor is to come in and be able to effectively handle the duties of the office. And so I think it's appropriate, or I thought it was appropriate, that the Alms Bud's term run concurrent with the Governor for a four-year term in the legislature reading. So now that is, that has been enacted by the legislature. And I will say, I should have mentioned before, the House Bill seven two eight seven, it passed both chambers, it is still waiting a signature by the Governor. And same thing with Senate Bill fifteen forty-one, did pass both chambers and is still, is also awaiting a signature by the Governor. Again, continuing with the key provisions of SB one five four one, the bill does explicitly state that the calls made to the Alms Bud's office are free of charge. It clarifies and affirms the Alms Bud's authority to conduct unannounced site visits that previously was not in statute, the ability to conduct unannounced site visits. And not only is the office now allowed to conduct unannounced site visits, but even during periods of emergency or facility lockdowns. And so now it expressly says that in statute. The bill also authorized the Alms Bud's to conduct surveys among incarcerated individuals to assess conditions, services or other concerns. I think that's a critical thing. I don't, I don't recall or know of any survey that's been done for incarcerated individuals in the state, hearing directly from them ever. And so, talking to my counterparts around the country, it's a pretty significant tool to use to be able to assess the conditions and also identify, you know, areas of concern broadly. And so we now have that authority in statute to conduct surveys. This piece I'm particularly proud of, and it grants the Alms Bud's Office the ability to present its budget request directly to the legislature, independent of the Office of Policy and Management and the Governor. And so, wanted to ensure that the office will never be in a position like they were when I came in, where you have a Governor who is communicating what the office's needs are to the legislature and then having to negotiate from that standpoint. Moving forward, the office will transmit what it anticipates its expenditures to be, to do its statutory mandate to the Office of Policy Management. And that is what will make it into the budget for the legislature to consider at the beginning of the legislative session. And so I think that's pretty significant. But also the bill does contain budget protections. And so it prohibits the Governor from making rescissions or reductions to the Alms Bud's office appropriated budget once it's enacted as well. And I think that's significant too, in the case that we have a budget, budget's enacted and then, you know, the state has to do budget cuts for some reason, the Alms Bud's Office will, will not be subject to those cuts. And I think that's, that's a pretty significant authority. I know some of our counterparts around, around the state and other state agencies don't have that authority. The Office of Child Advocate doesn't have that authority. I think maybe only other three or four agencies, including Elections Enforcement, has that independent budget authority. So it's a pretty significant power. The next key provision is it clarifies that the Alms Bud's is not required to investigate every complaint it receives and gives the office discretion in terms of which complaints that it's going to initiate a full-blown investigation into. I think that's important. The bill also standardizes the investigative process. And I likely will talk about this more at our next quarterly meeting, but do want to just briefly outline it. So it establishes a formal process for investigations requiring, it requires a public determination on the merits. And so the Alms Bud's investigation under statute must assess whether DOC or its staff violated administrative directives or state or federal laws. And if the department or that staff member should further investigate the complaint, modify or cancel an action, alter a rule, practice or policy, provide a detailed explanation for the action or rectify an admission, or excuse me, rectify an omission. And so those are the, those are the five or six things that the Alms Bud's Office can recommend once they do come to a public determination on the merits. It now requires under statute that ninety-two hours in advance of the decision becoming public, the Alms Bud's Office has to notify DOC, the employees who are identified in the report and any relevant union prior to public release of those findings. And the bill now mandates the DOC Commissioner to have to respond to those investigations. So it mandates that upon request, DOC must inform the Alms Bud's within agreed-upon timeframe of actions taken in response to the recommendation or provide a rationale for non-compliance. And so essentially what that means is when I close an investigation and I, and I provide the ninety-two hour notice to DOC, I send it, I release it publicly, I can say to the DOC Commissioner, or the Alms Bud's can say, rather, to the DOC Commissioner, within thirty days, within fourteen days, I'd like a response on whether you're going to further investigate, whether you're going to modify or cancel an action, alter a rule, practice or policy, provide a more detailed explanation or rectify an omission, and if not, a rationale for why not. And so I think that's an important thing in that, you know, now the DOC, these investigations are not just done in a vacuum where they can be taken and put in a drawer. The DOC Commissioner now has to provide a public response to an investigation that is initiated by the office. And I think that's really important just for transparency purposes. The next key provision in the bill, it grants the Alms Bud's Office subpoena authority to compel witnesses in production of documents relevant to investigations. And I think that's a tremendous power the office did not have prior to the enactment of this bill. So far, we have not had significant issues with production of documents from DOC. But, you know, I drafted this thinking about what's going on nationally and federally. And, you know, we may not have Governor Lamott next term, we may not have Commissioner Keros, and wanted to enshrine some of the practices that we're kind of engaging in right now. And I think the subpoena authority is an important one in the, in the case that someone does not produce certain records when asked and formally. The subpoena authority also allows the office to compel witness testimony. And so that's a tremendous power of the office too, in that, you know, now the office can legally call in an employee of the office, of the agency and conduct an informal hearing that is recorded and ask that individual to answer questions under oath. And so that's a, that's a significant authority. The bill also creates a witness interview process, creates a formal hearing process for interviewing witnesses, enhancing the fact-finding capacity for the office. The bill also codifies the methods by which incarcerated individuals The bill also codifies the methods by which incarcerated individuals may contact the Alms Buds office. So under the bill, they're allowed to contact the office via, we'll have drop boxes in each housing unit. There'll obviously be the electronic method that folks from the public have been using via email. And we're also allowed to have a telephone line directly free of charge from the facilities as well. And so it codifies those so that, moving forward, those those methods of having access to the office can't be stripped away by by future holders of the office or future DOC staff. And so, you know, those are a couple of the key highlights from fifteen forty one. Really proud of of the work that, you know, myself and advocates were able to do to get that across the finish line, as well as, you know, certainly the guidance of Senator Winfield and Representative Stavrum, you know, really getting this across the finish line. And was also proud to say that that bill in the Senate was was voted on unanimously. Not a single no vote on that Alms Buds Bill fifteen forty one. And only, I think, maybe three votes, three no votes in the House. And so pretty bipartisan support in both chambers for for fifteen forty one. And when you see something like that, you, I I obviously feel encouraged that, you know, that lawmakers on both sides of the aisle, I think it's really important to have this office stood up. I think that this office should have powers to to perform its investigatory functions. And so I was really happy to see that. Believe that covers the bulk of my report. I've been talking now for quite some time, and so we'll gladly turn it back over to the chair.
Well, thanks very much. So on our agenda, there's sort of two items that will be melding into one. So we'll, as as you just heard, this was an opportunity to hear the Alms Bud summary of activities for the past six months. It's also an opportunity to comment on the actions of the office in the past six months and recommendations of the office based on those last six months. So we'll, we'll sort of combine those two parts of the agenda. And we'll begin with any comments or questions from the Advisory Committee and then turn it over to to public comment. So.
Thank you, Attorney Ward, for that that report. Obviously, it's, I will say, I think, I probably speak for most people, members of the the committee, that I've been impressed with the amount of work that you've done since September. Obviously, this was an office that didn't exist. Clearly, there are models of how this office could exist, but it didn't exist until you stepped into your interim role in September. And without a promise that you would be the subsequent Alms Bud, once we had a formal, sort of formal appointment, I I feel like you really have put a lot of work into to doing the hard work of basically like starting up this office, both to the fact of like getting computer, figuring out hiring, as well as sort of doing all the legislative advocacy, in addition to trying to address some of the issues that have already already arisen and done all the work. So just to put out there, I I think it does sound like you've been very busy and into really doing the hard work that you've been asked to do in your role, which is great. I just did want to highlight a couple of things I think are are very important that you're already doing, but to continue to do them. Number one, the these offices do exist in other states. You and I think that's great that you are engaging with and having conversations with other states to learn sort of best practices, potentially teaching them sort of as we learn sort of best practices in in a dialogue, because there is a growing movement around correctional oversight throughout the country. And it's great that Connecticut and specifically our office is part of that that larger conversation, because I do think it'll optimize. Second, you mentioned in all the people that you engaged with, sort of legislators, people who are incarcerated, the correctional system, academics, advocates. I mean, it's impressive, number of people. I do think there is a lot of energy and interest and ability in our state beyond sort of what you can directly pay for to help move this work forward. So I would encourage you to keep doing that work, to tap into those resources throughout the state as you already are doing. Because my bigger point is I, it's great that the budget went up. It's great that you're getting almost eight hundred thousand dollars, both in this coming budget year and the one after. I am still worried that it is not sufficient to actually do all the work. Because not only did they make your budget, did they increase your budget, they also like increased the ask of what you were, what the office was expected to be be doing. As a physician, one of the few physicians on on the committee, and someone who has done some work around sort of evaluating systems, especially healthcare systems, the ask to like evaluate the whole system of healthcare in the DOC with like pennies on the dollar in three months seems overly ambitious. So I, I mean, we've already had conversations about this, but I think it needs to be thoughtful about how to like produce something of value that also builds the office and doesn't over overcommit on what can be done in that in that time period. Yeah, I mean, I think that those are my main main points. I don't have any particular questions or points of clarification, other than to say that I'm glad the budget went up. I'm glad some new powers were brought to the office. But I am still worried that there is, the budget is insufficient to what what is needed.
Thanks, Ben.
So I actually have a two-pronged question. First one being, I know we had had a conversation in the past in terms of you had a concern with, I think it's something about the budget, that anything that's left in your budget does not roll over for you. Would you be able to give a little clarity on that for the public as well as for us? But two, wondering, are you speaking a little bit to the tail end, to Ben's question? There, you know, the governor's ask of the increased responsibilities, wondering how big of a part of the OPM, I think it's the Office of OPM, that is doing a comprehensive project with the Governor's Fellows that are actually working in terms of the healthcare project of a cost per capita, for the cost of incarceration and healthcare? Just wondering where where you were with that project, or are you even aligned with that?
I'm I'm not aware of of the OPM's work on evaluating DOC's healthcare. I do know that there are other agencies looking at it. I know DOC is looking at it. Believe the state auditors are looking at it. Talked to them this week. Their report on the DOC healthcare system will not be out probably until next year around this time. So my report will will predate theirs. DOC's report will will predate mine, mine's will come next, and then the others. So I'm not familiar with the work that OPM is doing. But but I think the point is that lawmakers, governor's office and legislators have heard enough about the medical care and and DOC and how much there is to be desired. And they have heard about the litigation. And I think it's reached the fever pitch publicly, where, you know, they're expecting some answers on ways to move forward come this February. And so, and I think that's that's welcomed, because it's been a long time coming. And so, you know, I'm going to continue to talk to folks in the medical community about how to put together this this assessment that we've been asked to do. It it is a really brief timeline, and it is with, you know, some limited funds. But I think we can produce at least some broad findings by by February. And then obviously, we'll be doing that annually, right? That's, it's not a, not a one-time report on the part of the Alms Buds office, where we're now mandated to to put that together annually. And so we're going to take off a piece this year, and then we'll, we'll come back and look at it next year. So I I I forget what the first part of your question was.
The residual aspect.
So so in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, as we mentioned, the office had a budget of four hundred thousand dollars. After, after paying, you know, my salary fringe, and then the the money we appropriated for office expenses, the office has a remaining balance of two hundred and fifty thousand approximately. But because that that money is all allocated in a personnel services line, it will lapse on July first. So that money is is all going to go back into the general fund to not be used by the office. And then July first, we'll start with the new biotium and and receive seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
I'll just note on that point that we did make a specific request for that money to roll over. Austin, is there, do you know if our other folks remotely have any? Mel, go ahead, Mel.
Thank you, through the chairs. I just want to commend you, Attorney Ward, for excellent work during the legislative session to kind of set up structure for the office and codify practices and procedures that'll benefit not just yourself, but those who who come after you. One, want to get in a bit of an insight on your thinking as it relates to complaints. But before that, just, or actually, I'll just jump into that question. Great to hear that you now, you know, assuming governor signs the legislation, you have the flexibility on or discretion on complaints that you're, that you'll receive. Any thought to a tiered prioritization based on severity or categorization of complaints? And then the the piece that I wanted to comment on was, so that's the question, and the comment was, given the added mandates and expectations for your office, to the degree that you could speak briefly about what you see for the remainder of twenty twenty-five as a prioritization of the office in light of those mandates, and they likely bump up against the growing number of complaints you're receiving, asking that, because it sounds like you're not getting any, you know, you're not going to be able to hire any staff until twenty twenty-six. So I think it's a good moment to just kind of set expectations for the public in terms of your bandwidth. So question on prioritizing complaints, and then what you see for the remainder of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So we we actually have a prioritization kind of schedule. We we plan to adopt the same one that that New Jersey has, prioritizing safety and security concerns and and medical concerns as as obviously high-level priority complaints. Things that are probably going to be lower-level complaints, at least for the initial year, are things like property or housing placement, unless, you know, safety and security is implicated, like, you know, to say that somebody's threatening you, either staff or or another incarcerated individual. I think that would rise to the the level of a safety and security concern. But we also, you know, routinely receive complaints related to, you know, hey, I'm a, I'm a level-three incarcerated individual, and I'm and I'm housed at Corgan, which is our our level five, right? And so complaints like that, absent, you know, a safety, security concern or or a medical concern, we're probably not going to be able to address property concerns. We're probably not going to be able to address programming concerns. You know, hey, I've I've been here for X amount of years, and on my accountability sheet, I'm supposed to do X amount of classes, and I haven't been able to access them. You know, those are not the type of complaints we're going to be able to get to, and and I would say, the next twenty-four months. For the next twenty-four months, we really, you know, we have two statutory mandates, I think, over the next, you know, year, really, to take us to February. We need to do an evaluation of the services provided by DOC. And and I've kind of bucketed those, bucketed those services into, you know, health services, communication, which is the securest, the the video visits, food services, religious services, reentry services. And so you kind of have maybe six buckets of services we need to evaluate and do a report on. And then our other mandate is to do this comprehensive report or or look at the administrative directives and issue a report on which administrative directors we think need to be altered or propose changes to those. And to to me, those two things, in addition to this healthcare evaluation, which is part and parcel of the first part I talked about, are are really the priorities of the next, the the next year, I think, of the office, really taking us until February of of twenty twenty-six. And and I I know, you know, folks really, you know, think about this office as as responding to individual complaints. And that's something that we want to build the capacity of the office to be able to do. But right now, while we're still building capacity, we want to try to have the biggest impact where we can. And I think looking at some of these issues broadly, right, being able to, you know, look at health services or food services and being able to impact, you know, large portions of the property or of the of the system, as opposed to, you know, addressing an individual complaint here and there, I think is gonna gonna yield the best results. And the other, the other, you know, thing we we hope to do is is facility inspections. That's something that, you know, we'll be able to start doing once we get staffed pretty quickly. And that there's already a a matrix for assessing conditions at a property, at one properties. And so we'll be able to go through and do inspections and work with facilities to try to improve conditions of confinement. And so I think those three things, you know, are are really kind of the north stars for now. But, you know, the immediate goals are, A, you know, staffing, I would say staffing is is primary. And then the second thing is, you know, I I need to get back out into some of these facilities. Some of them I haven't been to since this winter, earlier, earlier this year. And so want to get out to these facilities and communicate what the plan is for kind of how the office is going to run. And and then, you know, really working on those those reports. So so that's, that's kind of how I'm looking at the office. Your your first part of your question was, I I believe it was related to how we are planning on responding to complaints. And could, would you mind repeating it?
Yeah, that that was the, I think you answered actually both in terms of your prioritization for the remainder of twenty twenty-five and and also the tiered tiered approach to complaints. I appreciate that. I'll I'll just flag, because I think it's important, right? Like, just what you've named in 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 response feels significant and overwhelming. And so just the way I internalize that is, you know, your your office may not be running through all of the complaints that are coming in, that are coming in for the remainder of twenty twenty-five, because you've got hiring and you've got some significant assessments to be doing. And I think that's just, that's that's good for the public and for incarcerated people to know the kind of prioritization and the mandates that are on you so that we're appropriately setting expectations and appreciate the approach. You know, my own view on this had been the more you're focused on structures and systems and services and leveraging complaints to identify themes and obviously addressing where you can is the right, the right approach here. So I just appreciate the insight there and just thought it was important for the 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 public to kind of get in your head and and then hear what what you're thinking the next, the remainder of the year looks like.
Yeah, I I I think it's important to communicate that plan to the public. And, you know, I I have been spending some time thinking about how how do we communicate how the office is going to function over the next year to to the incarcerated population. And so that's why I really, you know, I I plan to spend a good part of my summer getting out to these facilities and doing, hopefully, some town halls once we have some materials to kind of show folks what the kind of flow is. And so, yeah, I'll just briefly kind of share, we we, in statute, we're allowed to kind of take complaints three ways, electronically, the drop boxes, and through the phones. I will say, during this first year, we're probably not going to optimize the phone, because we just won't be staffed to be able to handle eleven thousand people potentially calling the office at any given time, while also taking in electronic complaints, mail complaints, and only having maybe one paralegal or one, excuse me, one office assistant, you know. So that we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll, we we hope to build capacity to be able to get there soon. But I I would also just caution this first year, we probably won't take complaints. We won't set up like the hotline so folks can call directly from the housing units to to the Alms Buds office. That won't probably be optimized maybe until a year or two from now. So we'll primarily be taking them through electronic and and mail. And once they come in, we hope to to kick out a response, have the complaint reviewed and a response out in forty-five days, or whether or not we're going to accept it for a full-blown investigation or not. And so that's kind of going to be the 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 process in terms of taking in complaints. But to your point, you know, I think the 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 goal is to take the individual complaints and have them punctuate or illustrate larger systematic concerns that we can then try to make recommendations and try to effectuate change for the 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 most amount of folks through the limited resources of the office. And so that's the intent.
Any other hands up? Daryl, go ahead.
Hi, Attorney Ward, I appreciate you. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I commend you on the work that you're doing. This is a heavy lift, but we all knew that it was going to be a heavy lift in the beginning anyway. And so I commend you on the work that you're doing. My question is, I've heard some of the ways that you wanted to handle some of the things that that you're faced with. It it's troubling for me, having been in a, being an incarcerated person thinking about like the guy that, you know, we may minimize the fact that his TV is broken. And, you know, maybe he went to stag and somebody dragged his TV, CO, or somebody dragged his TV to the property, and it slammed up against the wall. Now his TV is broken in the studio. They spent his last dollars on the TV, and nobody's going to fix it. And then we might not even see that complaint addressed for two years. And as minimal as it may seem to that person, the TV is a big deal. And I I get the big picture, I get the big systems back, but I also think about the individuals. I was just curious, have we thought about, or is there a way that we as the committee can help you? Or is there a way or? Or is there a way, or have you thought about reaching outside the box and utilizing some of our um, organizations that are out there that work with formerly incarcerated people to assist you in weeding through some of those um, complaints and things like that? Is there a way we could think outside the box and, and, and just go through there and help, you know, categorize, like, because some of those things are just a phone call or just an email. You know what I mean? Some of those things can be addressed pretty quickly, but they are time sensitive as well, right? Two years from now, the TV, and, and the reason why is a factor is that someone's TV is broken, and I'm just using the TV as an example. The TV is broken, the dude's upset, this person's upset, that leads to other issues. And a lot of times, you know, these, whether it be electronic device or what have you, it, it kind of keeps people, you know, having worked with many of my friends who have mental health challenges, their TVs keep them, keep them stable. I worry about something that we're looking at, it could be minimal, ends up being something that becomes a bigger problem later. And that person has way more problems because uh, issue that could have simply been addressed wasn't.
Yeah.
So I knew, but I'm thinking, there's, there's got to be a way that we could look, we could, we could help you uh, sift through some of that.
Yeah. So, so I, I appreciate your question. One, I think it's, I think it's important to clarify, you know, if somebody's having a property issue, that there is a process in, in the facility that, you know, they can, they can go to, they can access. There's a form, it gets routed to, to leadership in, in the, in the facility. Um, and they are, they are the best people to be able to address that property situation, because they're in the position to, if, if we're using the, the scenario you just laid out, get that individual a new TV, um, work with them on commentary. They have a, they have a specific property fund um, to replace items that are, that are damaged or lost by staff. And so, you know, I've, I've worked with um, individuals um, on that process. But I, but, you know, just in that particular scenario laid out, you know, I, I strongly encourage folks to try to at least fill out the property form in the facility before contacting the Almsbud's office to get them involved, right? Because that, because that's what the facility is going to say to me too, is this person put in a property form? Have, have, has the facility had an opportunity to work it out? And so let's, you know, unpacking the scenario you gave, let's say they've already done that, right? And the, in the, the uh, facility, you know, hasn't been responsive, hasn't been timely in responding back. Then they, they contact the Almsbud's office. I, I do agree that um, you know, and I want to clarify, it, it won't take them two years to receive a response. So if they put that in the, the complaint after we start, after we, we go live, which I anticipate, I'm hoping can happen sometime in the third or fourth quarter of this year, we'll start being able to accept complaints again. Um, they'll get a response back from the office within 45 days of them making that complaint, saying um, either we're going to take it in for a full investigation, um, or we're not, because we've been able to contact the facility and resolve the issue short of a full investigation. And so just want to clarify, you know, once the system goes live, which I anticipate to happen um, sometime in the third or fourth quarter of 2025, um, someone will receive a response back from this office within 45 days on their complaint. And so um, that's important to note. But I, but I, your point about being able to take in volunteers is, is a point well taken. It's something that I'm, I'm engaging with DOC and Governor's Legal Counsel on trying to op- optimize. Um, you might recall last month, we had the Pennsylvania Prison Society come in and, and give a presentation on how they utilize um, volunteers. And so we're talking to them as well about how, how they met, how they have their system. But also um, you know, how, how do we optimize that? Because, you know, I, I just talked about the entire um, dispute I had with DOC over the access of, of records, right? And so when you're talking about having volunteers in the office, looking at potential um, medical complaints, potential um, security and custody complaints, um, we just have to set up a process to be able to have um, volunteers. But that is certainly something that I'm thinking about is, is how do we expand the capacity of this office beyond um, the salaried employees? Because as, as uh, you know, Ben pointed out and, and others, uh, you know, have made aware, you know, even the employees that were going to be allotted in this budget are not going to be enough. And so we're absolutely going to have to think out the box in terms of utilizing volunteers. That's why I've also been having conversations with um, UConn School of Public Policy, UConn School of Law. We're going to have some graduate interns and some law interns um, in the office as well. Um, and so, but it takes some time to create those systems. But to your point, you know, we will um, absolutely be welcoming those opportunities and have those opportunities. And I'm hoping, um, hopefully by the third or fourth quarter of this year, um, we'll be back live, accepting complaints and be able to have a system where um, volunteers or interns will be able to help out with some of those things in, in the office.
Yeah, I think also I was thinking, um, when I was speaking, I was speaking about outsour- um, number one, I was thinking or, and or outsourcing. But the other part is, when I talked about the TV scenario, that means they have already exhausted those uh, when it comes to you, they've already tried that system, that's with, with inside. So I'm really familiar with that system. I mean, um, that DOC has set up where if you give a broken TV, read, write to the property officer and so on and so forth. So uh, when I'm bringing something like that up, this is already, that's when they've already exhausted those systems and it's on your desk. It's not, you're not the first stop, you're the last stop, but you're the stop that's important.
Well, that does the things, you know, the, at, at least part of this first 400 complaints I've gotten, you know, sometimes it's, it's been people who haven't, haven't accessed the internal process, right? Either um, they haven't filed grievances, like I, I had this exact, you know, not this exact, but a similar situation where somebody had, they, they were sent to R H U. Um, their property was bagged up and they reported to me that they lost a significant amount of property. So I reach out to, to the facility and the facility is like, well, we've encouraged him to put in a property form. We've told him we'll, we'll replace it, but he doesn't want to put in the property form. And so, you know, I, I went and, and talked to the individual and got him to put in a property form and they eventually compensated him for the stuff that he said was missing. But um, I just, I say that all to say that, you know, um, statutorily, my, the office does not require that somebody exhausts the administrative grievance process before contacting me. It explicitly says that somebody does not have to exhaust that process to avail themselves of the service of these, services of the office. Um, so I just want to make clear, sometimes we do get complaints where folks have not sought to, you know, the internal processes at the facility. Um, and so that does, just ma- making you aware that that does happen. It is a common thing where folks contact us before trying to resolve it within the facility. And, and that's perfectly fine. That's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I'd, I'd rather get to um, public comment. The one thing I would just say with respect to Daryl's question and your response just now is I, I think we'd all agree that the Almsbuds uh, can't be a substitute for the grievance process. Uh, but a huge part of the job, I think, is to evaluate the grievance process, right? And, and see, geez, well, is it, are people getting their TVs back or their property back uh, in a timely manner? Or is it getting uh, you know, swept under the rug? And so I, I think we do have a role to play uh, in evaluating how those processes work um, and, and, and filling in um, you, you know, adding to them wh- where appropriate. So uh, we'll move on to, to public comment. This can be, you, this is your time. Uh, you can ask questions or just uh, give, give commentary testimony uh, on the activities of the office. Marcel, if you want to kind of take the floor for it, I think we have eight folks who are uh, signed up. Um, and we also did receive um, written testimony, which we appreciate in, in particular from incarcerated folks who obviously couldn't be here in person. Uh, we, we very much appreciate uh, the time they took to submit written testimony, which of course will be um, taken under account as well. But for those in person and remote, uh, it's your time.
So I'd like to just remind everybody, it is Friday afternoon. We're trying to keep everybody concise, allotted to your three and on topic. Um, we thank you for coming out this afternoon and I think our first person is actually Ms. Fair.
We can't hear Ms. Parker. Ms. Parker, we can't hear you. Ms. Parker, you're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can't hear you. I think they're going to go with um, the Ms. Fair in, at the office first. I mean, she's there and then you'll, they'll bring you up on the screen. Okay, Ms. Parker?
Yeah, Ms. Parker will be number six. We appreciate you uh, being here, but we're starting with Ms. Fair. Thank you.
Bye-bye. There you go.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Barbara Fair. I'm Stop Solitary CT. Um, I submitted written testimony because I know I could never say everything I have to say in three minutes, but I just want to give you an, one example of many that I receive um, from people. Ms. Fair, I'm emailing you because my husband has dropped foot and requires a leg brace, which he purchased. And he went to Seg and Osborne and they made him take his brace off. After coming out of Seg, he got transferred to McDougal and his brace didn't follow him. So today he fell, chipped a tooth due to not having his brace. I've been calling Osborne and always having to leave a message, no response. Due to this mo- due to this matter, my husband has injured himself and I need help resolving this issue. That was on May 29th. I emailed it to the Almsbud's office. On June 2nd, um, I asked, was any, I, I asked again, Devon, are, is there any updates on this man who's experiencing hardship in getting his brace and other needs met? On the 5th, um, the woman wrote me back, she said, nobody came to visit my husband. He still doesn't have his leg brace. So I don't know what kind of prioritizing that would need, but um, I think that's very serious. Um, another issue, and I'll make it really short. I um, when I have issues with people after a while, uh, and, and lately I've just been going straight to, to Commissioner's office, because I feel with this um, the way it's set up that we can't take anything unless it's an emerg- a medical emergency or you get to prioritize what's important, what you consider important, um, leaves people without help. So um, uh, last week someone called, um, they wanted to know if I could look, check in on their son because they heard that he had OD'd. I didn't know, so I didn't bother to go to Devon. I went straight to the Commissioner's, uh, Deputy Commissioner and asked her, could she look in on it? Um, she looked in on it and checked him out and actually had, uh, he was in Seg, but they allowed him to come out and make a call. Um, and one more final example, I had um, asked Devon to look in on someone and um, the response was, you know, we're not taking any um, calls, any claims until, you know, the long spiel about that. And so it's just to the point that um, I understand, uh, well, maybe I don't understand, because I'd really like to know what your day looks like, that you, it's been nine months and we don't have any staff. And I heard you um, talk about that, but could you give us a definitive answer? What is the roadblocks that are keeping you from getting staffed? Because we've had the $200, now you're going to have to give it back. But it's been nine months, why don't we have an administrative assistant? I think that would have been the number one thing, uh, get in your position. And so if you could just explain that.
Certainly. Well, so I, I want to, you know, A, thank you for the job that you do in terms of, you know, serving as a resource for folks who are incarcerated and their loved ones. Um, because, you know, I'm just one person and so I can't, I can't do it alone. I know, I, I, I can't do it alone. So and, and I, and I think I've, I've said to you directly, I, I don't ever um, feel like you're stepping on my toes if you go and advocate for somebody and reach out directly to the administration. Um, so I just want to thank you for doing that, because I know, you know, you don't get paid for that, you know? Um, you know, that's, that's not something that you're mandated to do. You're doing it because you, you care and out of the kind of CR, so I want to thank you for that, first of all. Um, in terms of um, your, your question about why we don't have an office assistant, um, you know, it, it is uh, it's something I've, I've outlined in the report, you know, in that I didn't get authorization to hire anybody until um, March or March or so. Once we got authorization, the governor instituted a statewide hiring freeze. And so that authorization was rescinded. Um, then I, so if you, if you take it from that, so I started in September. And by March, I was able to get authorization to post the job. But right before we posted the job, the hiring freeze went into effect. I had to resubmit it. The job got posted um, in April and enclosed in April 22nd. Um, between April 22nd and essentially June fir- June 4th, I was working on a lar- large part on the bills you just talked about, you know, and that we just talked about. And so that consumed a good amount of my time. Um, you know, I think most folks in this building could probably testify that, that 1541, the bill I'd, I'd talked the last about, um, almost didn't happen. That bill um, almost did not pass because of uh, opposition on, on the last day of session. And so um, you know, and I, I know plenty of advocates whose, whose, you know, great pieces of legislation made it all the way up to both chambers and didn't pass. And so, you know, to kind of put in perspective, um, you know, what it took to get this stuff across the finish line, 30,000 bills were heard this year. Only 10% of them passed. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful to say, you know, ours was one of them. And so you, you, when you, when you ask about what my day to day looks like, um, each day is, is so different um, for me and working in this role. You know, today I spent, you know, half of my day up at um, McDougal reviewing video um, from an incident for a claim that came into this office. I'm spending the la- latter half of my day with you all. Um, on Monday, I'm going to spend part of my day meeting with um, you know, with folks from um, UConn and UConn School of Public Policy. And then I'll get back to responding to some complaints and um, working on the structure of the office. And so, you know, this period is, is really just, every day is just so different. And um, and I, I, I don't, um, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I share your frustration, you know, in that it shouldn't take that long. You know, look, I, I ran a private law firm for, for seven or eight years before I took this role. And it, it definitely doesn't take six months to get someone hired. Um, and so I share your frustration, it shouldn't take that long to get somebody hired. But unfortunately, when you're working with a bureaucracy as large as the state of Connecticut, it does. And I'm not, I'm not the person um, that makes those decisions, you know. I, just to kind of give you some more insight into the process, I don't even see the names of the people who applied until after DAS reviews them. And so once a job gets posted, it'll take maybe two to three weeks for me to even get the list of applicants. Um, and so it, it is, it is a ton of bureaucracy. I'm trying to figure out how to navigate it. And, and really just try, trying to do my best, but I think you're right to be frustrated. Um, and I'm frustrated too, because it, it really shouldn't take that long. Um, and I'm hoping that now that we have this budget in place, um, that starting July 1st, the process will move a lot quicker. But I think, I think you're right to be frustrated.
And, and I appreciate that. Um, my thought is what can we all do? Committee involved uh, as well, to move this process along. Because I think to, to tell people who have been waiting for years to have some relief, to say that, you know, you have to wait maybe next year for me to get around to, it's, it's pretty tough.
Yeah, I, I.
So anything we can do to change this process?
Um, yes, that, there, there will be opportunities for the public to help. I, I, I promise you, and, and I'm trying to, trying to create those. But um, short of that, right now, I would say from now until, you know, the fall, maybe September, that the biggest thing I would ask of you all is for patience and grace.
I got a lot of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. And our next is Attorney Alex Taub- Tabus. He's remote. So next would be Mr. Draconis, Carlos Draconis, also remote. For those of you who are remote, you have to accept the panelist on the screen in order to be admitted in.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Good afternoon, uh, dear Mr. Ward. Please accept my sincere congratulations for remarkable legislative achievement in strengthening correctional oversight, dignity and public health standards. It's been more than six months since the first time I visited you regarding my daughter Michelle Draconis, that is in York, cor- correctional institution. And at that time, uh, after talking to her and experienced some of uh, her complaints, I wrote to you several times uh, regarding a few issues that are concerns for myself. I'm a doctor and scientist and always dedicated to uh, health and provide health to those people that need, in need. And having my daughter. Wrongfully convicted in jail. Questioning a few things regarding the. Procedures in York Correctional Institution. Not only for her, but for, for the other inmates. Disregarding the reasons of their conviction. Because they are human beings and they have dignity. So. Remembering my letters to you. I would like to know what has been done in term of nutritional improvement. I pass to you. Analysis of the. Nutrition at York. Which was very deficient. As shown in my analysis that I did with the nutritionists from my hospital. And also. I would like to know what are you doing to eliminate what the inmate called a slop food. Increasing fresh produce and fortified items. And introducing articultural programs. Fresh star farms at York. A pilot project for indoor vertical farming at York Correctional Institution. To provide healthy food and yoga training for incarcerated women. Also, I'm concerned about the healthcare. Provision for women's. Since my daughter is a woman and, and in York, there is about.
Dr. Draconis.
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank.
I just, just wanted to, you know, briefly respond. Thank, thank you for, for calling in, Dr. Draconis. You know, you and I have talked several times about. Some of the issues. So, so you know, first and foremost, you know. Michelle, you know, has lied to complaint. It is being investigated. By my office. I've been in regular communication with the warden regarding that complaint is, is, is recent as this week. And so I anticipate that I know DOC is still conducting an investigation into that incident. And as soon as I have their findings, then I can start my investigation. And so, so I want to say that first and foremost that, you know, we, we are investigating. The most recent complaint that was lodged and we're looking into it. Regarding the food issues and the issues with medical, you know, I think they were somewhat addressed in my last, in my remarks. About the report, but we're going to be providing a evaluation and recommendations on those, on those issues to the legislature. In our December 1st report. You know, I, I've looked at the food services contract. As you mentioned, I shared with you. What the DOC Commissioner, excuse me, DOC nutritionist. Has provided to my office in terms of the micronutrient breakdown for meals. So I've provided that to you. I've shared that with lawmakers and as, as you know. You know, the, the macro nutritional value of, of the diet in DOC is, is high in sodium and, and low in. A lot of critical nutrients that you need. And so. It's, it's an issue I am still trying to wrap my head around, but will have some complete findings. By December 1st on that and, and on the medical issue, you know, I spent a good amount of time. In this presentation, talking about what our, what our new authority is. As part of this new budget, we're hoping to hire an advanced nurse practitioner. That can look more closely at the healthcare in DOC because, you know, I'm not a doctor. I, I don't have the ability to substitute my judgment for, for medical professionals. And so I think that's a, that's a skill gap that's missing in the office, but one that we're hoping to quickly address. But we'll be issuing findings on the medical system overall. December 1st and DOC is mandated to issue some findings, as I mentioned before, October 1st. And so there, there are issues that we're working on, you know, with respect to the, the vertical farming and the farming at York. It's something that I've, I've talked about in passing with, with Warden Sexton. It's something I've talked about with the deputy commissioners. I, I know it's something that they're hoping to do. There is some gardening that does go on at York, obviously not, not enough. But it's something that I'm, I'm, I'm working on and, and I hear you and I appreciate your advocacy, but I just wanted to provide those responses to some of the things you said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Ward. Thank you, Dr. Draconis. I do apologize that we are keeping things very succinct today. This is why we try to do written testimony along with. Oral testimony.
Thank you.
So next on our list is Timothy Townsend, who is supposed to be in person. Timothy Townsend. No. Okay. Next Nancy Peters. Ms. Peters, just a reminder, three minutes. Yes.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes, committee members. Attorney Ward, I too commend you on the work you did legislatively. I'm new to working in those chambers and it is very arduous and I, you know. It's so important that we lay the groundwork that way that you're, you know, you have the authorization to do these things or nothing else will happen. And also I, I did want to say that. I really liked what Darrell McGraw said. Totally agree that. To someone, well, you probably know that I, I interact with hundreds of people through, especially through Securus. And every time I hear from somebody about their issue, it is so important. It just comes right through how very important that issue is. If it's a TV or books that were taken away or. A cellmate that, you know, it, it's all so important to the person. So. It is very challenging and it is very frustrating because you want to, you want to take care of all those issues. And you can't, but you do your best. So I'm just going to skip through here because I feel like everything's important and you'll let me know when time's up, right? So I'm, I'm going to start with. You know, I thought I needed to somehow make a judgment and, and that's impossible on what's happened so far. So it's just some observations and some feedback. So what some of my friends told me. On the positive side. Attorney Ward contacted the facility on my behalf about mistreatment. By a certain CEO and you know what I'm talking about and it's being followed up on. The CEO who's been tormenting everyone has been stopped from coming to this unit. She and all the others are so extremely grateful. Another one during my first interaction with Mr. Ward, he prioritized assisting me in resolving my overall health concerns. Right after our communication over the phone and he continued through to its conclusion. On the other side, some feedback. The main thing, these are individuals, the main thing I'm hearing is what did the ombuds do so far? No one knows or can see what changes happened. Since he was hired, he did send a memo out. A few months ago saying he'd hold town meetings, a town hall. And listening tours, but we haven't seen them yet. In my experience with the ombudsmen, I had one phone call concerning a serious medical need. After that one call, two months have gone by, no follow-up. These are just people's perceptions, what they're experiencing. Most men feel as he is doing whatever he needs to do to stay in office. Meaning he's not going to make any waves. Several men have written him and he basically told him he's too busy and can't take requests. We understand what's behind that, but this is their perceptions. One said to you, Mr. Ward, when you walked through to do your inspection of Osborne. It was so many things going on before you got here. I'm surprised you didn't smell the new paint. That they had on the walls everywhere, shaking my head. You would hear and get the truth from inmates if you didn't walk around with the people that oversees us and that control the system that we live in. That's like you asking a kid, has he been mistreated or abused in front of his or her parents? You can read the rest of what I have and I think it's all important. But I really did want to start with what. You know, my incarcerated brothers and sisters wanted you to know about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
We're done.
Just want to respond, Nancy, I want to first of all, thank you for, for all the work that you do because I really do appreciate, you know, you and Ms. Fair. You all, you know, don't get paid and you all do this work, Cindy as well, you know, you all do this work, you don't get paid and it's, it's a tremendous help and just staying on me and I, and I know. You know, it, it's tough because I'm running a thousand miles an hour, but I do appreciate you all following up with me and making sure, you know, if I, if I slipped through something, remind me, hey, you know. Two weeks ago you said this. So I, I appreciate that. I, I will say. I just wanted to the, to the, to the person who made the comment about me, you know, coming through Osborne and, and being with staff. Some of these initial tours were really for me to get to know staff. And kind of see the facility from a whole holistic standpoint. And so. And also, you know, it wasn't very clear in statute that I could kind of show up unannounced. And so, you know, at least the practice for the first six months was me coordinating these visits with. DOC staff letting them know, hey, I'm coming up and being escorted around the facility. I, I imagine that in. You know, this next year, I'm going to be popping up at the facilities a lot more unannounced. And obviously with less security. Now there's certain parts of the facility I can't move through without significant staff with me, right? Like I, I can't go to RHU without at least a captain with me or something. In certain places I just can't go because I don't have the key. So. But, but you know, that's a common thing I heard from a number of folks is that, you know, they felt when I was moving through the facility, when I was doing the initial tours. That I was really mostly talking to staff and I wasn't communicating enough with, with incarcerated folks. And so. I'm hoping to do some of those town halls this summer. That's, that's one of my priorities is to get out to. These facilities again and, and talk directly with folks. I was cautious about doing that before because when I, I told myself when I went, I wanted to go and have some information to relate to folks as opposed to just listening. To, to complaints. And so I appreciate those comments. I, I hear, I hear you. And I'm going to keep working on them. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just think whatever door we're given, we enter there and we take it from there and we build. So thank you all.
Thank you again, Ms. Peters. Our next speaker is Ms. Janice Parker, who is, I believe, remote. Ms. Parker.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to be here and I hear that most of the questions that I had about. Why someone hasn't been hired yet? Come on folks, look around. It's Barbara. We might, let's stop looking and let's start getting results. As a taxpayer and citizen, as a. Inmate 15 years ago, people that have compassion of the people we want to talk to because we feel we're getting somewhere. Now, on another note, I'm glad Mr. Tristone has opened up the door of health and wellness. I literally been talking to DOC for two and a half years about health and wellness. I even got certified with my company that I've been at for 10 years to do business with the state of Connecticut to give back. To, to cleanse people, to definitely make sure that people are getting the right nutrition and everything. So I'm glad it's calling up around again. I have letters from people that want my products to go inside and that's why I became certified to do business with the state of Connecticut. But they're not opening the door for me. They're telling me, wait, wait, wait when it's a need. It's a need now. People are getting older, they're getting heavier. And we, the consumers are paying for all this, let alone you don't even have enough staff to transport them to where they need to go. My other concerns right now is that, Mia, you had a conversation about this. We had a conversation about several different. Returning citizens that I gave you a list of who've been there 20, 20 plus years, 30 plus years, who really wanted to talk to you about some things. That they seen. Yes, you might've stopped by, wanted to, but. A lot of them feel like because you was with DOC's staff, they pulled back, they kept it in. And that's, and, and from us telling them, have a conversation with him and they, they see a staff there that may don't, don't want to. File a complaint because at the end of the day, when you leave, we're left back. We got to deal with the staff. My other concern is, and I told you before. The inmates in the winter time don't have coats to go outside. Everybody want to go outside and get some fresh air in their lungs. They should be. But they only got coats. They don't have enough coats and I don't understand why we don't have enough coats and hats. For all the returning citizens throughout the state when we make them. So I'm reading a list of something, I'm skipping past some things as well. But I also, like I said, very big and going to continue on calling Sharonda. She hasn't called me back. I've been calling Kiro's office, haven't called me back about becoming a vendor. When is it going to happen? Because as you can hear, health and wellness. Is the thing inside of DOC that's keeping our people weighed down. Me, I testified in March about not getting proper care for my breast exam. They saw something on my breast exam. They didn't take me back to look at my breast exam to seven months later. Mentally, it took a tack to my head. I was losing weight. I didn't know if I was going to die in here. So definitely health and wellness is needed and it's not needed. When it's needed, it's needed now. When are we going to do something about it now? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms. Parker. Yeah, I, I, I share your concern. I share your frustration. I, I will say. You know, there were, there, we got 41 applicants on the last. Job we posted. I'm not sure if any of those individuals are formally incarcerated or any of the individuals you're referring to. But you know, when, when we do have these jobs available, I'm certainly going to distribute them through, through a number of networks. And so I encourage. Folks who are justice impacted, who are formerly incarcerated to apply. And just really quickly to answer your question about, about contracting, you know, that's, that's a bit. Quite a bit outside of my scope, but I would at least encourage you to contact the Department of Administrative Services there. You got to get on their list as a vendor with the state before DOC will even, even consider you to do, to do business with them. And so.
I understand that. I've been at this two and a half years and they're not responding. Every day that go by. Every day that goes by is another day. I've been at this two and a half year. When are they going to respond? Meeting messages and things like that. I'm making, I'm making, it's might as well say best friends by now because I'm always. Sending her information. I didn't, I didn't get this SMVE just for it to show. I got it to help my fellow people that are left behind.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have a give back program where I'm going to give more than enough back to the city and, oh, oh, to the state of Connecticut. To make sure that these gardens happen and things. Not about the money for me, it's about getting them healthy. And I got letters to prove that they are looking forward to this.
Yeah, well, you know, I just, just want to say I was, but I can't, I can't. I can recommend to, to the commissioner, you know, that they, that they engage in certain activities, but I can't make them. And so.
Exposure is the best, best possible, I mean, the best lesson for me.
Right. So thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Our next speaker is Cindy Prizio. Just a reminder, three minutes.
Well, I, I would like to start by saying Chair Julie fooled me. By his opening comment saying that we weren't have time to ask our questions and make our comments. Three minutes doesn't cut it. Thank you very much. And I, I would really like to have you look at that. Oh, shut up. Friend. I, in, in anticipation of this meeting, I called some of my families. And one of the granddad of a youngster, he's probably 25 years old at Garner. Is complaining about it's a worse run facility. They don't have enough staff. They have lockdowns constantly. They're short staff on weekends. We can't visit them. They're supposed to go out of the facility outside once a week. And that's not even happening because of the lockdowns and the shortages. And so sometimes it's two weeks before they get outside for a lousy hour. So I want that to go on record because quite frankly, if we're talking strategically. I feel strategically, we're having such hiring problems. Then we should be planning on letting more people that don't need to be inside, out on parole. Dammit. And, and offering for the new people instead of letting them in, offering diversionary programs. So strategically speaking, that's what I'd like to see. I was told my, this, my young one was in this prison Garner since February. And I guess he saw one hanging, I believe, and. He, somebody attempted suicide with something, some kind of spray. And so I'm hoping Devon, that you are being notified immediately. Of these heinous situations. We need to know. And then the next thing would be, how are we treating the trauma? Of people seeing that. My son still won't talk about things. God bless him. He protects me. My son still won't talk about things. God bless him. He protects me. So I, I want to go on record for that. And, um, my New Haven family, Spanish speaking, um, staff is still a problem. I don't want to hear it. New Haven, we don't, we're in the state. We don't have Spanish speakers. Um, and medical is still their biggest issue. So some of my questions would be, I was just wondering, in, in, uh, this report advocacy organizations on page two. You, the office participated in numerous working groups on issues such as workforce safety, blah, 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 while also collaborating with advocacy organizations, including disability rights. My, my organization's not on that. I don't see Stop Solitary on that. And I was just wondering, how do we have a bigger voice to make? We know. We've got kids that were incarcerated, loved ones. We are in touch directly with people inside. Where is my voice or my representation for my marginalized communities? And then I, I just have one other, um, if I may. Barbara, may I?
Three minutes for your last statement.
Sorry? All right. Um, my last issue, so to speak, is that I dropped the ball. I was so immersed in my own bill, which was the nine, one of the 90% that did not get passed, although it was put in the implementer and then what, uh, kicked out hours later. I missed the part of the bill where you were changing the terms of the Ombuds Office, uh, from two to four years. And this is not a criticism of you, but I would have liked more discussion about that. Like I, I, I see it from both sides. I'm not sure I would have wanted that early on. Um, but I was wondering, again, what is the role of this advisory council? Your boss, do you have a boss? Is your boss the governor? I mean, I don't see, this seems a little uneven to me. And, um, and, and so that's my question. What role does this council have in helping determine if that position should go from two to four years? Thank you.
So I'll, I'll, I'll respond to, to all that. I'll, I'll start with the last question first. About what, what role does the advisory committee play in, in terms of, I guess, advising legislation? Their, their, uh, ability is just like any other public citizen, right? The advisory committee is chairs or individual members could have submitted testimony, public hearing testimony, just like anybody did on, on 1541 when they came up for a hearing, um, during the legislative session. Um, in terms of the question of who's my boss, um, actually 1541, one thing I didn't mention is it, it creates a, a codified removal process for the Ombuds. Um, so it's now a clear process to how to, how to remove somebody from being Ombuds. And so the, the process is that the complaint, um, they go to the governor. If the governor believes that, uh, the complaints have merit, then he has to forward the complaint to the judiciary committee. The judiciary committee shall hold the hearing and then the judiciary committee, uh, can hold a vote, um, on removal. And so that is the process to remove the Ombuds. Yeah. In, in terms of, um, the term, you know, I, I, I can certainly see why folks have concerns. Just in, in my experience, being the inaugural person in this role, just two years, it's, it's just not enough time. It's, it's just really not enough time to, to, to do anything in this role. I'm coming up on my one year anniversary in September, right? And, and by September, the only thing I'll really have done is fix the statute, got a budget and started hiring, right? So, um, it just, it takes, you know, a good amount of time to, to get into the role. And I think even more so because I'm, I'm the first person, hopefully some of this stuff is, is growing pains that my successor won't ever have to go through. But, you know, I just think, you know, the, be, because, and I, I think this is also a lesson I learned from the, the first iteration of this process that I didn't participate in, because it takes so long. It took two years to get an interim Ombudsman. It could take, you know, and that's why I think it's important that it's codified in statute. This is a four-year term. That person can serve until the next person is appointed, uh, because it took two years to get me in the role. And, and, you know, when I hear Ms. Ms. Fair's frustration about how long it took to stand up this office, you know, I know she's talking from 2022 when this was put into statute. She's not talking about from September when I took, you know, I've only been in this role for less than a year. Um, but I understand she's talking about, we've been waiting three, four years for this. And so, um, it's all that in mind, why, why I think we changed that to, to four. On, on, you know, Stop Solitary and, and what standard of justice not being listed in the report, that is certainly an oversight. But, you know, I will say Cindy, you know, you and I have talked several times, many times throughout this legislative session, throughout the six months. You got my, you got my cell phone number. We talk regularly. I talk to Ms. Fair regularly. So when I, when I, when I said advocacy groups, it is my apologies for not, for not listing you, um, specifically, but, you know, I did, I did mean, uh, you all when I did say advocacy groups because I talked to, I probably talked to Ms. Fair, you know, at least two or three times a month. I talked to you at least once a month, um, you know, if not more. And so I talked to Nancy probably, you know, a couple of times a month too. So, um, so I, I, I try to stay involved. And I think to your question about how, um, folks can continue or to get engaged in the office, you know, I, I mentioned we're trying to work on getting some volunteers and being able to offer volunteers, opportunities for folks to come in, come and do some work in the office and, and help out in the office. Um, you know, I do appreciate when you call and tell me, um, stuff is going on. And I try to help out to the extent that I can.
Did you know about Garner?
Oh, yeah. So I was going to get to that too. Um, I'm, I'm not being notified of, of the deaths. I, I did hear there was, there was a recent, um, suicide in, in Garner, um, that happened sometime around the end of legislative session. I think like sometime around beginning of June. I, I found out about it through, through another advocate. I didn't, I didn't get notified by DOC. So DOC is not notifying me, um, about deaths. And so, um, you know, we're going to get around to fixing that, you know, and, and the A Ds, there actually is a particular portion of the A Ds that directs them to contact the public information officer whenever one of these critical events. And I'm going to, I'm going to work to try to amend that administrative directive to codify that they need to notify the Ombuds as well. But, you know, some of these things take time, uh, but I, but I certainly agree with you. I should be notified when those deaths are happening.
Or attempted suicides or whatever.
Yeah.
If you don't investigate, we're taking the word of the corrections department, who we know has falsified and, and manipulated situations to their benefit.
Yeah. I, look, I, I hope to build the capacity of this office to be able to look at, um, as many critical incidents that happen in the facility as possible. But, you know, right now, I don't unfortunately. And, and so, you know, I, what I do get every day is I get, um, maybe 20 or maybe, actually maybe less than 20. Maybe I get about 10 critical incident reports across the state that get sent to me every day. And some are overdoses, um, some are fights, um, and excessive force stuff. Sometimes they are more fatalities. Um, and so I get those sent to me every day. I don't, um, always have the opportunity to look at them every day, depending on what's going on with my schedule. If I'm in a facility or on the phone with you or here with lawmakers or meeting with, you know, the governor's office, I may not get to look at them every day.
I'm available until nine at night. And seven in the morning. So my, my question is, did you know if Garner, that Garner was on lockdown such, so excessively over staffing shortages and that the people weren't even getting an hour out every week or two?
This is, this is the first I'm hearing. I'm hearing that. So.
So, um.
We're trying to keep this concise, Cindy. I'm not trying to cut you off. This can be a private conversation.
Yeah, yeah. This is the first I'm hearing about the Garner case.
Benefit from this, and that's what I'm saying. Our type of advocacy organizations were frontline. We want to get together in the same room with you and learn from each other and hear what's going on. At least I do.
So Cindy, let's, let's, let's just, let's, let's schedule something. You got my number? You got my email? We, we can do that. Now the legislative session is, is ended, I'm, I'm happy to put something on the calendar and sit down with you all. So just, just reach out to me. I'm happy to do it.
I, I hope somebody, I want to thank everyone in this room. I want to thank everyone in this room. And also I was hoping a bigger, uh, group would be following us, um, virtually, and they are not. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. You know, one thing I will turn around and say before we get to our last speaker is, you know, when we talked about health, you know, Barbara Fair brought to the attention quite earlier this year, at least last year, in terms of the death in DOC. I think that fatalities, near fatalities, whatever, however they look, I think those should be prioritized from DOC to your office immediately. But I'm not going to get on my soapbox. Mr. Timothy Fair is our last.
Can I make just one point on the, the legislation? I think, um, Attorney Ward mentioned it earlier, but, but not just now. The, the term limit, um, increase, you know, is effective 2027, right? So I, I think that is important. I would have been a little more concerned with it if it's like, hey, I want my, right? So I, I, you know, you didn't mention it, but I think that was important insulation there.
Mr. Fair?
Good evening. Okay, Juan. Um, there's been a lot of discussion and I actually had something written down, but my phone died out on me, so I'm going to wing it. Um, first thing I want to say is, um, Mr. Ward, there is nobody in this room that I can think of, and I don't know everybody here, but I can probably assure you that we all want you to succeed in your responsibility and obligations. Having said that, I'm sure that, um, your, your obligations are enormous. And can be overwhelming as well. But I do, having been incarcerated for a number of years, I've had some personal experiences. Darryl talked about one of them. And to prioritize things, I don't know if you've heard about the incident, um, in Iannic, where the intercoms were taken out of their cells and restricted housing unit. That is a major, major concern. Uh, and it can be a dire, definitely. If you can't contact the staff and, and inform them, make them aware of a situation, that can be a very fatal situation, depending on, on the nature of, of the matter. So I think that, that complaints come in all the time. And to say that you, you're going to prioritize them, I understand that there, there needs to be some kind of order. But you're not getting information, um, I, I think is a critical matter. And the thing about two years and four years of, of your being in that position, I think that the, the thought on, on another side was that nobody really wanted you not to have four years, but wanted you to have two years to allow you to pro, pro, provide evidence that you were, uh, not only competent in doing the job, but you, that you were actually doing a job. And so it's not a critical thing against you, but, you know, to give you four years upfront and then you can just sit back. Not, again, not to criticize or to say that that's what you would do, but I, I think it's reasonable to expect that that be a, a, a consideration as well. And, and I'm just going to leave it like that. I did have a lot of other things I wanted to say, but, um, I, I'm, I'm going to just leave it like that right now.
Yeah. I, I, I do want to say, as, as Chair Dooley, uh, expressed, that, that extension of the term does not apply to me. So it, it does, it was not me extending my term. It is saying whoever comes after me will not serve a. So in 2027, when we have a gubernatorial election, the next governor is elected, the next governor is going to appoint the Ombuds and he's going to serve for four years. Could it be me? Maybe. You know, we'll see. But, um, that does not, that term change does not apply to me. My term is still for two years. And, and so that change doesn't take effect until we get a new governor or there's a gubernatorial election. So I just want to clarify that.
Who made, who made that change? Because regardless whether it's you or your successor, you know, to extend that four years off the top, I think is, is problematic. And again, it's not, it's not.
I hear you and I, I respect your opinion. You know, I, I, I disrespect, I, I respectfully disagree in that, you know, most of the, um, commissioners, most of the people who are running our state government are appointed to four-year terms. The, the Office of the Child Advocate, my, my counterpart who covers the juvenile detention, her term is a four-year term. The Ombuds was the only office where it was a two-year term. Most of the people that serve in government in similar situated positions are four-year terms. And so I want, I wanted to really make this office on the same footing as everybody else, not at a disadvantage. And I, I really did believe that a two-year term was, was a disadvantage to whoever holds the seat after me. And so, um, and, and look, reasonable minds can, can disagree on that point. Uh, so I, I, I respect your opinion on that. With respect to my office being notified, um, about, you know, critical incidents and things that are, things that are going on. You know, I think that is a, as a work in progress. Um, you know, DOC as an agency, um, and I, and I don't, I don't think I'm stepping on their toes by saying it, but they're not, they're not an agency built for transparency. That is, that is why advocates tried to create this office because they are not built to distribute information free, freely, right? That's just not how they function. And so I do hear you in that, that's a role that I, I hope this office can fill. And an example of that, right? Where we had the water main break up at the infill complex. Um, that was like, I think like the last two weeks of session that happened. You know, this office tried to get information to the public about what was going on because DOC was not providing it, right? Unfortunately, um, even in terms of visits being resumed. They weren't notifying families that visits had been resumed and operations had been resumed, or even what they were doing about the water issue. And so I, I, I hear you in that there, that's a role certainly this office can fill. I think, um, we're working on finalizing the processes by which DOC is mandated to notify us of certain information. And so it's a work in progress. And so I, I appreciate your comment because I, I share your concern. And, and I, I do want to hear more about the, the York thing because I, I don't know about it.
So can you investigate that?
I, this is the first I'm hearing of it.
What I'm saying, will you investigate that?
I'd, I'd have to hear more about it to figure out whether, whether or not it needs a, it needs a full-blown investigation or, or what the issue is. But I, I will say too, you know, I, I don't, I don't think I've gotten any complaints in the office about that particular issue. And so this is the first I'm hearing about it, but I, but I'd like to hear more and, and see whether it's something. And, and I, I want to be clear too, because a lot of folks ask that, that same question, will I investigate? A formal investigation is, is, is a, is a time intensive thing. So if I say I'm going to formally investigate something, that means I'm going to the facility, I'm talking to individuals, I'm reviewing videotape, and I'm likely going to issue a formal report that is in accordance with this new process that we have spelled out. Now, that doesn't mean I'm not going to look into something, right? It may not, something I may look into and I may contact the warden or I may go talk to people. It may not require a full-blown investigation, right? Where I'm, I'm going and going up to the facility, doing informal hearings, getting documents, um, because I only have a limited capacity to be able to do as many of those investigations. I can't do all of them, right? So like, I'll give you an example, like there's, there's, there's going to be 30, at least 20 something deaths that are likely going to happen. There's going to be over 200 security division investigation reports this year. I, I don't have the capacity to do an individual investigation, full-scale investigation to all those things. Um, and so when I say I'm going to, when you say investigate, I want to hear about it first to figure out whether it's something I need to fully investigate. Or it's something that I can, I can call up to a warden and, and get a better understanding about and go see when I look at it, go, go to our facility. And so I, I want to make, make that distinction.
Okay. All right. So.
I'm not cutting you off. I actually want to say something in terms of actually.
That would be nice if I had more time to do it.
You, you, you may. Give me a second. Um, the reason I'm, I really feel like I need to say something now is the fact that, let us not forget, as the only woman on this panel who is formerly incarcerated, I am going to add my concern with the one facility we have of only a female facility that we historically have had some atrocious circumstances occur within their, their, their walls. You know, we, there has been historically an issue where there have been instances where females have been hurt almost to the point of death within those DLC walls, within RHU. And I think that's something, as the only female facility, I think that needs to be a priority. And I will say that as someone as, on this committee, as a woman who's been formerly incarcerated, so I'm just going to leave it at that and I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay. Thank you. So the, the other thing is since the Protect Act, you know, I hear a lot about shortage of staff. I think that you have less incarcerated people today than you did 10 years ago. And you had more staff now, but you need more staff because they're exercising their right to call out sick, all other kinds of excuses to lock the facility down and say, we don't have enough staff to take people outside to get an hour's worth of air a day. I think that's ridiculous. While they sit up on the desk with their phones, which they're not supposed to have phones in the facilities, things of that nature, and, and they're not really doing their job. It doesn't require a lot of people to take a, a, a unit or a quarter of a unit It doesn't require a lot of people to take a a unit or a quarter of a unit because I think that they take a quarter of a unit out at a time, 25 people or whatever. How many staff members do was it really required to take 25 men out? And most of them don't even go out. So that's just an excuse that that needs to be challenged as well. And the other thing is that I I I have a personal experience and 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 with having exhausted the institutional policies, recommendations of of filing a complaint. And I'm gonna give you a short brief of it. I I had a book and you talk about priorities and and the importance of things. I had a book that was ordered from a store. This, the book was delivered to the store, to the facility. It was signed by staff. I never received the book. I filed it. I filed the complaint. I went all the way up to the, to make it short, I went all the way up to the to the Ombudsman, which the records show that the book was received in a facility that somebody had to sign for it. I couldn't sign for it. The people in the mailroom had to sign for this book. I provided all of the information that was necessary to prove that there was a book that I paid for out of my money that I never received. Got to the Ombudsman and he said, you never approved your case. So that's just, that's just the 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 trust that people have or don't have towards the Ombudsman. And I I trust that you won't be one of those people.
I I hear you and I and I I appreciate your comment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. Thank you very much for speaking this evening. Oh. Oh, Mel.
Just wanted to take the opportunity because it we've, the public discussion touched on issues of of violence within Connecticut's prisons and jails and wanted to name that for the folks either in the room or listening, there's also the Office of of the Inspector General responsible for investigating cases of use of force by any peace officer, which would include corrections officers. And curious Attorney Ward, if you could offer any insight in terms of conversations you're considering having with the incoming in Inspector General Judge Elliot Prescott and or if you see that office as a potential relief in some versions of investigations that are better suited for that office as opposed to yours. And some of the public may not be aware of that office. So I figured it was a good opportunity to to raise that.
Yeah, tha- thank you for that. I I haven't had the opportunity to engage with Judge Prescott yet. I think his confirmation was probably shortly after mine, but but I hope to. I have read his report on the in custody death that we had in McDougal back in December as incarcerated person, on incarcerated person death. And so, you know, I think there's a, there's a ton of opportunity for our offices to collaborate because my office has certain powers that his office does not in terms of my access to records. And so so, yeah, I think there's, there's a ton of opportunity to collaborate with with the Inspector General's office. And, you know, certainly would encourage folks to consider them as a resource for some of these, these, you know, fatalities and critical incidents because they they do have a statutory mandate to look at it as well. So, yeah, thank you for that point.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and actually having these conversations, these very candid things. We've touched on issues tonight that have been very concerning, but especially so these issues that we're dealing with that impact the quality of life, but also life itself. I think these are conversations that need to be happening more often. And if anything, maybe open dialogue between advocates and your office that can maybe be scheduled to work together or whatever the case may be. I am now, thank you all for speaking this evening. I'm gonna hand it off to my co-chair to Adra.
No, I I just want to thank you as well and thanks to members of the committee who took the time this evening. Yeah, I think what what came to the fore for me is the need to, for this office to really continue relying on the frontline folks who are in this room and and outside of this room. And hopefully, you know, with with increased staffing, the office will be able to really assist you all in the work that you have been doing. But in the meantime, you know, we've heard three or four reports that had not come to the office directly, either from through complaints or from DOC. Certain of those are are concerning. I think, you know, we've highlighted that, you know, certain things should be immediately brought to the Ombuds' attention by DOC. In particular, suicides, attempted suicides and other critical issues like that. In the meantime, please do keep up your excellent work and keep Attorney Ward informed and keep his feet to the fire, our feet to the fire. We really appreciate all you've done and not least staying with us until past 6:30 on a Friday evening. Thank you so much for your time. Yeah, sure. I think we have six members present out of 10. And so it's an excellent point. There's, we've had an open seat for many months now. Yeah. Yeah. We have made suggestions for the seat that Senator Kissel's appointment, I believe. Anybody who has recommended that that is a a victim of violence is, and we have made some recommendations. And as as I and others pointed out when we were all, we had our our own little confirmation hearings, almost every incarcerated person is a victim of violence. So and any anybody, a formerly incarcerated person should fit that role. And so, yeah, we we hope that seat will be filled. I take your point, Ms. Peters. It is a concern of ours. I I do appreciate those who are able to come in person and those coming on Zoom. You know, it's a Friday evening in the summer. It's a difficult time, but this is critically important. And we absolutely, I agree with you that we need to have good representation from this committee. Right? Yep. I fully agree. And you've all, you've all taken the time to to show up tonight on a Friday evening. And, you know, you're demonstrating exactly how you, you know, regard this as as an important issue. I appreciate that and absolutely take your point with respect to this committee. So thank you all again for for taking the time and and do have a good weekend.
Nancy, I'm just gonna address that final statement for you, just to let you know. A, as someone who's been in the system myself, trust and believe, we've already addressed that issue. We're in the process. We're in the process of addressing that issue of commitment.
Thank you.